We'll call this workshop to order, which is the Planning Council along, Planning Commission along with the City Council. Bobby, come on up and get us started.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank everybody for coming out this afternoon and going over the Comprehensive Plan rewrite. It's been a project that's been well in the making for some time now, but we've got it to a point where we're pretty much ready to move forward on it and solicit input. And that's the perfect idea for this workshop is to gather input between the Planning Commission and then the City Council. So I'd kind of like to go over a little bit about what a comprehensive plan is before I turn it over to Michelle Morrison with the Regional Planning Council. The Regional Planning Council is the entity who the city hired to do the rewrite of the comprehensive plan. So a comprehensive plan is a main document that provides policy foundation for local planning and land use decisions for respective jurisdiction in the state of Florida. Per Florida statute 16331771, the comprehensive plan shall provide the principles, guidelines, standards, and strategies for the orderly and balanced future economic, social, physical, environmental, fiscal development of the area that reflects community commitments to implement the plan and its elements. These principles and strategies shall guide future decisions in a consistent manner and shall contain programs and activities to ensure comprehensive plans are implemented. The sections of the comprehensive plan containing the principles and strategies generally provided as goals, objectives, and policies shall describe how the local government's programs, activities, and land development regulations will be initiated, modified, or continued to implement the comprehensive plan in a consistent manner. The plan shall establish meaningful and predictable standards for the use and development of land and provide meaningful guidelines for the context of more detailed land development and use regulations. All jurisdictions within the state of Florida are required to have a comprehensive plan per Florida statute. That either is a county or a city. So everywhere in Florida that's incorporated has a comprehensive plan. Per statute, comprehensive plan is required to have the following elements: future land use, housing, infrastructure, conservation, recreation and open space, transportation, of which the City Council adopted the transportation element rewrite on August 7th, intergovernmental coordination, property rights, which was adopted in 2021, and resilience and sustainability, which is an optional element. The current comprehensive plan was adopted in 2011 and has a planning horizon to the year of 2030. So there are some elements in the comp plan, the current one, which are very outdated. And so that necessitates part of the reason for the rewrite. The city contracted with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council to rewrite the comprehensive plan with the exception of the transportation element, which was recently adopted by the City Council. The rewrite will modernize the comprehensive plan and make the land development regulations consistent with it. And as I had mentioned, the purpose of the workshop was to solicit input and questions or any input for the comprehensive plan that you may have and solicit those changes prior to the rewrite being presented for approval and transmitted to the state in public hearings. Now I'll introduce Michelle Morrison with the Regional Planning Council, who will present the draft. She'll be sitting as she has a foot injury, so we'll accommodate her accordingly.
Can everyone hear me?
You speak out though, please.
So Bobby did a great intro. I'm going, I'm going to try not to cover anything that he covered. But yes, we were hired as planning consultants to help rewrite the comprehensive plan, to bring it in line with the recently revised Land Development Code and then also to comply with any Florida statutes that have changed. So you see what we're going to talk about today. I'm going to introduce a little bit more about the Planning Council, who we are, growth management, and why we have the comprehensive plan, just in case you're not too familiar with the comprehensive plan and what it's all about. And then dive in just a little to each of those nine elements that Bobby talked about, and then the optional elements. So we are one of-
One second. Bob, are we not, is this not going to be on our screens? Ah, there we go.
There we go.
Magically it appeared.
It's easier on me, too. So we're one of 10 regional planning councils throughout the state. We are made up of eight counties. We go all the way out to the east coast to Rivard and Volusia. And 78 local governments or municipalities are also contained within our East Central Florida region. And then just a few of the items we do are listed here on the screen. But we promote intergovernmental coordination between local governments and various agencies. You can see land use comprehensive planning there. All the other specialties, guess what? They're, they're involved somehow in the comprehensive plan because it's comprehensive. So how did we get to being required to have a comprehensive plan? It's about managing growth and how we're going to do it. Florida's population growth is displayed here on this chart for about 200 time year, or 200-year time span. And I'd like you to just think about when you arrived here in Florida. Maybe your family brought you, like me, it was in the 60s. I looked down there, wow, the population was down near 5 million. You can look, the most recent estimate was at 22.6 million here in Florida. And you can see from the quote, it sure doesn't look like a place people would want to move to. But Senator John Randolph of Virginia was completely wrong when you think about Florida. We, our region has four of the fastest growing counties in the state. And so with all this growth, we started getting rules and regulations. In the 70s, we were looking at environmental concerns, providing infrastructure and public surface, services to all these people that are moving here to Florida and to also protect our natural resources. So in 1985, the Growth Management Act significantly influenced land use patterns and development practices in Florida, and it has helped to protect natural resources, improve infrastructures, and promote more orderly growth. Those are the goals. You know, some, some may say, no, maybe not so much. So guess what? It's always changing, always having new statutes that we have to pay attention to. I'm thinking the gentleman sitting next to me is probably up to date on all of that. So as Bobby said, we are required by chapter 163.3177 to have a comp plan. And it is a blueprint for what a community aims to achieve in the future, but also respecting like what are the needs today. And we're concerned with directing the future for, you know, not only just the land use, but how does that impact economic development, transportation, and other equity decisions like health, social connections within the next 20 years? It's usually a 20-year time period that we're looking at. And a little bit more about comprehensive, like what does this term comprehensive mean? Comprehensive plans have a broad scope, meaning they address a broad range of topics. You can see all of them here. Second, they're comprehensive in terms of geographic extent, meaning that the comprehensive plan covers everything within your municipal boundaries and sometimes beyond. Third, they present multiple goals and policies to be implemented over a long period of time. And it is the legal foundation that legitimizes your local land development code. All land use decisions made by the city must be in conformance with the comprehensive plan. So it's a very important document. So these again are the nine elements that are required and then the optional resilience and sustainability element. And I'm just going to touch a little bit on that one now. Maybe you have concepts in your mind about what is sustainability, what is resilience? But sustainable development is development that meets the needs of the present without comprising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. And that's from United Nations World Commission on Environment and Development. And sustainability is the balance between the environment, equity, and economy. Well, how about resilience? There's a lot of resilience work going on right now. It's the ability to bounce forward, to absorb and recover, and get better in the face of short-term shocks and long-term stressors. So what are these short-term or acute shocks? They are things such as a natural disaster, like a hurricane. They're sudden, you're going to know that they exist. A disease outbreak like COVID, infrastructure failure, FIU pedestrian bridge. On the other hand, the chronic stressors are underlying negative things that are happening and, and within the fabric of our communities, problems such as lack of affordable housing, homelessness, poverty, and even air and water pollution. So these acute shocks can exacerbate those low-level chronic stresses that are ongoing. The pandemic is an example of that. The dramatically increased joblessness, inability to pay for housing, basic needs. There was mental illness, business failure. So the resilience and sustainability element looks into protecting the people in the city, the environment, both natural and built, and then also the prosperity. So being so comprehensive, it generally takes a long time in terms of planning the process for updating, adopting a new comprehensive plan, rewriting a comprehensive plan, and generally a couple of years. So we started in late 2021. The Land Development Code had been updated. There was extensive public engagement with that. And that was kind of the impetus to get started on rewriting the comprehensive plan. And this is a process, it's kind of repetitive and boring, it looks like. But we started with putting all the GOPs, the Goals, Objectives, and Policies, of which there are, I think in your current plan, some over 700, into spreadsheets. And then we did the same with every data table, with every figure and every map. So we went through and reviewed things that might need to be changed because of statute. Maybe they were redundant, they, they could be combined, they could be moved to another element, or they simply needed to be deleted because it no longer was applicable. And then we started meeting with city staff. And that, that was many meetings for each element, particularly the future land use and infrastructure. Those, probably even capital improvements, had, had quite a few meetings. During that time, your, I guess your former development director really wanted to use the most recent population projections. And so we were in, supposed to get them in 2022. And the pandemic, another impact of the pandemic was that census that was done in 2020 took a long time for the experts in population projections to vet that data. So we waited for it. And each quarter, they would say, well, not quite yet. Well, we, it's coming out next quarter. And so it was a series of, I think, three times they told us that. So it was about nine months that we were waiting to get some updated population projections based on 2020 census data, not 2010. But meanwhile, we had meetings to go over the GOPs. So we were, we were always working on something. So the comp plan examines relevant information such as population projections, patterns of existing development, suitability of land for development, capacity of public facilities to serve future development, and the city's financial capacity to make improvements to those facilities. You can see here, there's a comparison with the goals, objectives, and policies in each of those elements. You know, how many there are in the adopted plan, how many are proposed. There are fewer in the adopted plan, and it even has an additional element. So if there are any other acronyms you can get out of this meeting besides GOPs, it's going to be LOS, Levels of Service. So throughout the comp plan, there are Level of Service standards that were reviewed in consideration with the Land Development Code and with best management practices and even with regulations. So the ones that are proposed change are highlighted here. And the ones that are water-related are regulated by the Central Florida Water Initiative. There are some new ones that were added, and these are with police officers and firefighters. And that's addressed in the capital improvement element. And then your parks acreage per 1,000 residents was also increased. So now I'm going to step into each of, there are 10 elements. And it's just going to be like this 30,000-foot view of the elements. You can get an idea of what kind of concerns, issues, aspirations it addresses. I'll talk about the new policies, maybe some data that's within that element and just to give you an overview of the comp plan. So everybody who thinks of a comprehensive plan will think of the future land use element. It provides guidance on how and where to develop redevelopment and to preserve, focuses on sustainable and resilient growth management, addressing adequacy of land uses in relation to current and definitely future population demands. So this element unifies the goals of the other comprehensive plan elements. There's also a future land use map. And another acronym for that is FLUM, F-L-U-M. Future Land Use Map depicts the desired pattern of land uses. And then the future land use element also provides a means for ensuring comprehensive plan consistency through development of the Land Development Code. So you've heard me talk about population projections. Future Land Use Element addresses this. So projected population figures determine future facility needs and land requirements based on at least the minimum amount of land required to accommodate medium projections. So medium projections come out of the University of Florida, Schimberg Center for Housing Studies, and they are place-based. Projections are anything beyond today. Estimates are how, how many people are here today? We don't know exactly. That's, it's an estimate and, and in the past. So you can see this chart has estimates and projections from 2010 then all the way up to 2040. And a recent estimate for Apopka's 2024 population, I think this just came in, shows a 13% increase since 2020. So if you look, we didn't know that when this data and analysis was done, say, a year ago. We didn't have that number. You can see it falls on the line of what was projected at the time. And it's in line with 2025, there's going to be an increase by 15% from 2020. You can look on out to 2040 when this, this comp plan is going to have that value of 2040. There are projected to be close to 83,000 people here in Apopka. And you may think you're growing like crazy. There are municipalities are growing much faster than this. You notice also the, the county's projected population. It's averaging around a 4% increase every five years. And then also, if you're discouraged about the, the population growth, you can look to see that it's going to start decreasing. So even though you're having more people here, the, the percentage increase is decreasing. So there are a lot of maps required in the comprehensive plan, and the future land use element has the most of them. I think there are about 17 maps. And these are some of the maps that are in the future, or all of the maps that are in the future land use element. So we agreed early on that the council would take care of maps and generate, and create a map template, maps that were concerned with anything external to the city. So information supplied by the Water Management District, Department of Environmental Protection, County FEMA. I think I got all of them there. And also, because these maps have a whole lot of data in them, it's hard to see. It was a decision to have a map of, of the northern and the southern section. So that is for the, the maps that are larger, have a lot more data in them. I'll give you a peek at what some of the maps look like. And then the ones that the city creates are based on city data. You'll see what they look like. And those generally will be the whole city all in one map. Generally, public services, like service areas. So this is the future land use map or that FLUM that I talked about. And there are some 20 land use categories. You can see it looks like a patchwork quilt here. And this is the northern section. And the southern section. So that, that little pie chart over on the right is our, the categories of future land uses. So we combined all the residential into one. You can see agriculture, mixed use. Something to, oh, and on the left are the existing land uses. So that's, that's what's here today. So if you, if you compare, just, you know, what's going to happen in the future with the future land use designated as it is now, you'll see common to many local governments, ag is disappearing. Went from 18% down to 7%, while residential land increases by nearly a third, goes from 35 to 47%. Industrial land uses more than doubles, so from 4 to 10%, providing the city with economic opportunity. So also emerging here, you see on the right, there's this mixed use, land use. And this is nearly 15% of the total acreage. So this shows a focus on mixing of uses. Could be residential with commercial. And typically in a single-use area, which is common now, you're likely to be getting into your car to go someplace. We can reduce that by having a mixed-use area. They can help bring residents closer in proximity to destinations of daily needs, services, and jobs. And some of the benefits, you can imagine, economic, environmental, but there are also social and health benefits, too, with mixed-use developments. They increase walkability, something called internal trip capture rate, reducing reliance on external roadways, also on those motor vehicles. And then it can also diversify the city's tax base. So there are hundreds of policies. I think there are about just over 625 or so policies, 100 less than the adopted plan. Definitely not going to review all the, all the policies, but touch on some of the new policies or all of the new policies in each of the elements. If you notice, this is for the future land use element, there were three. And they address CRA, brownfields, and then annexation. Notice that all of these policies have this, let me see if I can use the pointer here. Shall, will, shall. Those are requirements. So you'll, you'll start looking at policies and saying, oh, is that required? That, that has to be done? Or is it aspirational? Is it an encourage and a promote? And so the, the strength can come with what Apopka wants as well as you have to pay attention to the statutes. There are things that must be required. So housing quality, cost, tenure, as well as changes in housing characteristics are addressed in the housing element. An assessment of projected population growth and housing demand is required in this element. And the future land use element, which I just showed you, provides support by summarizing the amount of land necessary for a single and multifamily housing development. So again, these population projections come into play with housing because you're required to project how many housing units you need to accommodate the housing or the population that's projected. Try to use this pointer again. This is 2040, 25,000, single family. And then there are a couple thousand, you know, multifamily. So that's about 27,000 housing units projected to be here, needed to house the population for 2040. Now that's not saying you need to add 27,000 right now. You already have around, this is 2021 data, 16,000, around 16,000. But the increases are here around 11,000 units. And all these projections are based on the ratio now that you have of single family to multifamily. So you have 90%, roughly 90% single family. That's what the projection carries forward. So new policies within the housing elements are for keeping up with new state strategies, seeking technical assistance, and providing public education on diverse housing options. Policies that consider marginalized population renters. 25% of Apopka's are renters. And also housing trends. So the conservation element is the third element I'm talking about. Looks into natural resource sources, identifies them, and mechanisms to conserve and protect these valuable natural resources, ensure water quality, and minimize threat to wetlands. Here, there are three new policies. We're looking at upland buffers, maintaining native vegetation in 100-year floodplain, and habitat preservation for designated species. And there are required maps with the conservation element, and these are four of them. These again are using the north-south template, the data outside of the city. This is one of them. This is the northern section for the wetlands map, which is a required map in the comp plan. The capital improvement element identifies mechanisms to finance the necessary transportation, infrastructure, and recreation to maintain those Level of Service, LOS, for the community and future growth as envisioned in the future land use element. There were three new policies proposed for this element. The water-related facilities is, is the first one. Then also Regional Transportation Improvement Plan and protecting the LOS in adjacent local governments. and protecting the LOS in adjacent local governments. So this element, the infrastructure element, underwent substantial changes, really just remodeling. Some local governments have an individual element for each of the sub-elements, but many and most, I would say, put everything in the infrastructure element. And you can see they're very much water-related. And then there's also the sanitation. This element identifies the amount and availability of infrastructure needed for proposed development, including the sub-elements, which are potable water, aquifer recharge, sanitary sewer, stormwater management, and solid waste. We worked closely with the Public Services Department on these GOPs and rearranging this. Kind of came up with the idea that while everything that's being repeated over and over again in each of these public service sub-elements, let's just put a general public infrastructure element up top. And everything, something that applies to all of them will be in a policy up there. So in the general public infrastructure sub-element, all the policies are new, considered new, but they actually just bubbled up from each of those sub-elements. These policies address level of service, that LOS, location of facilities to maximize efficiency, minimize cost and impact, incentives for public infrastructure, and to ensure adequate capacity. We've also got policies for facilities, timing, updating of facility master plans, and then your five-year schedule of capital improvements. So potable water was up there as goal number two, or the second sub-element in this infrastructure. You've also got sanitary sewer, natural groundwater, stormwater management, and solid waste. There were a few new policies. There was one with potable water. And really, I think it was just identifying the Central Florida Water Initiative, which was formed after your last comprehensive plan was adopted. Also got the sanitary sewer. And these policies touch on reclaimed water and providing of a wastewater service. Policies related to stormwater capture and the use of natural vegetation for stormwater capture. And I say capture as opposed to runoff, but it is runoff that is captured through either retention, detention, or natural vegetation. And there are quite a few maps required for the infrastructure element. You can see them here. The majority of them are Apopka's service maps. What are the service areas? What are the boundaries? So Apopka would create those maps and probably put them all on an entire map. Whereas the drainage basins and the soil suitability come from entities outside of Apopka, and those are put on the north-south template. This is an example of one, data from the Water Management District on their drainage basins. So the intergovernmental coordination element identifies best strategies for adhering to regional and state policies, as well as enhancing land use compatibility and collaboration with local governments and agency partners within the region. There were no new policies with this element. So I said, well, let me just pull some data from the data and analysis. And, you know, these are the intergovernmental coordination agreements. I think there are 57 of them. And these are the types of agreements that are listed in this element. There are agreements that represent cooperative efforts for solving intergovernmental problems. And they're a means of achieving greater efficiency for both parties involved. For example, the city has joint use agreements and reciprocal agreements with Orange County School Board for Recreation Facilities. So the quality of parks and recreational opportunities available to residents are identified, along with the discussion of policies and strategies to enhance existing facilities and open space amenities, improve access to parks, strive to conserve future parkland, and open space. So there are no new policies with this element, but the level of service was changed from three to 10 acres per 1,000 residents. So it's a pretty substantial change. Why was this done? The Parks and Rec Director said, let's be in line with what the national values are, which is 10. It comes out of the National Recreation and Park Association. And the facilities here contribute to the level of service. The table lists recreational facilities located within Apopka's municipal boundaries. They're provided by the city, county, school district, and even private establishments. And now I'm going to step into one of the last elements. This is the optional element. I talked a little bit about resilience and sustainability. This element addresses community resilience, again, through identification and mitigation of those short-term shocks and long-term stresses. So it's an entire new element with 26 policies. I'm not going to introduce every policy, but I thought why, I'll just go ahead and introduce the five objectives. With each of these objectives comes policies. So the first is sustainable principles of development and redevelopment. There are policies looking into nature-based solutions, reducing heat island effect, improving water quality, and reducing greenhouse gases. Second policy, reduce the community carbon footprint, promoting green building standards and alternative transportation. There are some of the policies in there. Strengthening economic resilience by developing partnerships, policies, and programs. The support retain and/or expand small disadvantaged and independent businesses. And then the fourth objective, sustainable and resilient operations within city operations, or opportunities within city operations. So we're looking at energy efficiency, municipal facilities, weatherization, and even things like multi-generational gathering spaces. And finally, resilient infrastructure principles, looking at heat reduction, energy generation. Excuse me. I need to drink some potable water. So the very last element was already adopted. This was required, property rights element was required in, I think, July, mid-2021. And that was the first thing we did with Apopka, was to draft this very brief element. That was required before you could do anything else, make any more amendments to comp plans or land development codes. And now I'm going to stop with all the introduction of the comp plan, you know, why we have it, how it came to be, why there was an updating of the comp plan. And the next steps, other than discussion here today, are to take the feedback. Staff is going to look into any changes that would need to be made. And then there would be planning commission and city council hearings. So what I was going to say about the timing of that, I'm not sure when the hearings would be. But after the hearings are made and everything's been approved, then you would transmit that to the state. I think you have 10 days or something to do that after the hearing. And then state agencies such as us, DEP, DOT, FEMA, would review the comp plan amendment. And we have 30 days, 31 days to get back to you with any concerns that we may have or any of the other agencies have. If there's anything to be addressed, then you would make some changes. You would have another set of hearings. And it pretty much goes back to then transmit within 10 days. And then you would hear back from the state, I think, within five days. And then after everything's approved, you have, I think, a 30-day period before it's adopted.
So with that, we'll open the Florida questions, ideas, input.
We starting on this end?
Yeah.
Mr. Dumey?
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here with y'all. Just a couple of things. First of all, I thought this was a really, really nice plan. I really liked the conservation element, the recreation, open space. And that's, those two things really interested me. So I thought you did great on that. The one question I have, and this was on page eight of the very first part, did I understand it correctly that we were increasing the open space requirement on new developments, up to 35% on many of them? Is that a question for you, Bobby? Mr. Howell?
Page eight of which?
The very first part of the presentation. And you can just answer in general if that's. I'm sorry, it was in the element, not the presentation today. The actual element itself.
Page eight would be the future land use element.
It looked like the open space requirements had went up. Is that correct?
So on page eight, there's two policies there. One is 131R rural settlement.
Yes.
Tier density max. That's actually a carryover from the existing comp plan. You can tier up developments. There was one that was recently approved up off of Pass Road. It was a four-lot subdivision, you might recall, that came before the planning commission. They did a 50% or 35% open space. So there's no increase there. So this is carryover.
Good, I'm glad to see it, 35%. Because that's good. I just wanted to say that. I appreciated that. Other than that, I thought it looked really good, and I didn't have any further questions.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Anderson? Mr. Last guest?
I did have a few. I did speak to them prior to the actual presentation. And one, I mean, who's going to address the passive, the 35% passive open space? Because we have it as 20%, minimum 20%. And then, of course, I told you my concern with the counting stormwaters and retention ponds as open space. I felt if we build a community and we have minimum 20% of open space and they're counting stormwaters and retention ponds, those are spaces that the residents cannot use. So I was concerned with that. Because for me, open space means it's space that the residents have access to. So how do we recommend that the new developments not consider stormwater or retention ponds as open space?
So I think we discussed this a little bit before.
Right.
There are stormwater facilities that are as an amenity. Maybe they have trails, boardwalks, and access. But as Bobby said, the way the policies are now in your land development code is where you could specify, you know, if there was a stormwater facility in open space. You know, it's not going to be this big square pond with a chain-like fence around it. It would be amenitized for access to the public, access and enjoyment to the public. One way to do it.
So the one question I wanted to ask, because I saw, I was not here when they they did the land development code. But now, so we're kind of updating our comprehensive plan because we did the land development code. Isn't it the other way around? Don't we usually do the comp plan first? And then from that, we develop the land development code? How did that occur right now? So we're kind of tailoring our comprehensive plan toward the land development code.
As we discussed when we met Friday, the land development code was updated in 2019 by the city council. I think there was a contract that went back to 2016 or something for that. I can't speak to the specifics as to why that was done that way, but you are absolutely correct, Commissioner. You usually update the comp plan first, and the land development code is updated to reflect the comprehensive plan. The land development code implements the comprehensive plan. Those are the actual bylaws that would implement the elements of the comprehensive plan. Was not with the city in 2016. I don't know what the reason for that was. But we are trying to correct that. With this comp plan rewrite, we will go forward. And then there'll probably be some land development code issues that would have to be updated for us to implement policies in the comprehensive plan with the land development code. So keep in mind, comprehensive plan is basically the guiding principle. It's a policy document. It is, it trumps the land development codes. So if there's a policy in the land development code, or the comprehensive plan, that is in conflict with the land development code, the comprehensive plan is the overriding principle that we have to abide by. I hope that kind of answers your question.
So when I had asked you, and I remember everything, I had asked you, you said it's in the land development code. So how do we adjust it? Because with all these new developments, like we are promoting connectivity, walkability, people be able to get from one location to the other without having to get in their car. Remember, I had some concerns with the width of sidewalks and connectivity, where are they close to a public transportation? Are they close to retail stores? I know the Kelly Park interchange was a form-based code, but I'm seeing a lot of annexations now into the Kelly Park interchange. Now, isn't that restricted to some extent? You know, the annexations into the Kelly Park interchange?
Well, the way that the property be annexed is if it's contiguous to the city limits. So if it's touching the city limits, under Florida law, it's eligible for annexation. Ultimately, the city council can deny the annexation because all the law says is you consider an annexation. That's it. You don't have to approve it. There's nothing in our joint planning area agreement that says you have to approve an annexation. There's nothing in state law that says you have to approve an annexation. But if they're within the KPI area, that one-mile radius, and they're contiguous, most of these property owners have approached the city about annexing in. They have been annexed in since I've been with the city, since 2017. We've had a lot of annexations up there. They've subsequently developed in the KPI, under the comprehensive plan policies that are there, and then under the form-based code, which is there. So there's a policy in the existing comprehensive plan right now, and it's carrying over to the rewrite that says that if you're within the form-based code area, that one-mile radius of the intersection of State Route 429 and Kelly Park Road, you're required to get a mixed-use, future land use designation, and then apply for a mixed-use KPI zoning and provide a master plan that's subject to the character zone that you're within. So that's all in the comprehensive plan. It goes back to compromise that was struck between the environmental community and development community back in probably the late 80s, early 90s, when the Wakaba Parkway was planned to come up through there, which is now State Route 429. That intersection there, that interchange, that's the only interchange that's between Apopka and Sanford, barring the one up in Sorento that's there now at 46. So that was all a compromise to allow development, intense development within that one-mile area. Everything out of there is very rural in nature. And our comprehensive plan states that if you're outside that KPI, any policy that's north of Poncan Road and it's going to carry over into the new comp plan, you're capped at two units an acre. But some of these areas going further out are capped at one unit an acre. We have some areas that are 1 to 10.
So how are we preserving rural areas?
Through comprehensive plan policies, yes. As Commissioner Dumey had brought up, the policy on page eight of the future land use element, rural settlement, there's tiers in there. That is help to preserve rural areas of the city. Case in point, there was a project that came before not only the planning commission, but the city council, a couple of meetings ago, early in the summer. It was off Pass Road. There was a four-lot development up there. The gentleman approached the city, wanted two units an acre. We looked at the consistency of the area and said, no. The max you can get is one unit per acre, because that's what's consistent with the surrounding area. So the comprehensive plan is a document to help preserve. So the comprehensive plan is a document to help preserve rural character of areas. So the example I gave you the other day is, is if somebody comes to the city and says, I want to build a commercial development out in the middle of a rural area. We would look at the consistency of area and say, no, that's not consistent. We will not recommend approval of that. So the comprehensive plan is the guiding document to help preserve those areas.
Okay. The other thing is how are we protecting the suburban areas that we, because it seems like we're creating a lot of suburban sprawl. Is that we have a lot of developments that are coming with multi-mix use, which is single houses, you know, multi-dwellings. But they're not connected to anything, not transportation, not retail. So how, how, how do we kind of slow that down?
Once again, it's through the comprehensive plan. So you're capped at density. And this had been a past practice in the city years back, going way, way back, is, is that the city would do PUDs, plan unit developments. I think we talked about that. Where people would use that as an attempt to circumvent the code, basically, so they could do setbacks that they wanted to do or have in townhomes mixed in with single-family units in an area and not connect. The way that, number one, there's policies in this new comp plan that talk about PUDs, plan developments, and how they should be done. Number two is that the land development code basically states that in order to do a PUD, it has to be a mix of uses too. Not, some might argue that a single-family home and a townhome is a mix of use. But the way that the staff interprets a mix of uses is that residential, non-residential. You have to, and you have to provide offsetting public benefits to do a PUD, such as like a trail dedication. Preservation of open space. I think the PUD requires a thirty-five percent preservation of open space. You know, lots of offsetting public benefits. It's not just give it away kind of thing.
So I did notice in, in one of the pie charts that what we currently have for recreation and parks was a certain percentage. But the future showed a much smaller percentage. How is it that we are growing in our population and yet our recreation and parks is decreasing?
I think.
One of the pie charts that you had there, I noticed that.
Yeah, I have to go back and look at that. But I know you currently have a level of service of three. And then you would like to have ten. And I think.
What, I'm sorry, when you said?
Oh, acres per.
So we have a level of three, which, how does, what is that?
Three acres per a thousand residents. It's a, it's a strange level of service to me, but it's commonly used throughout the nation. X number of acres per thousand residents. And there, there are other things to consider, like if you wanted more parks, maybe look things at like Park Score or the Walk Score Two Parks. And you might consider other things when increasing your park, park lands.
So what I've noticed with a lot of developments is they have these little pocket parks that we have. But when you go into these developments, these pocket parks are usually totten parks. They don't really serve the community as whole. And, and so how do we help to change that? I mean, some new developments are putting dog parks, but that's if you have a dog or, or a pet to take there. But that's not something that the entire community would have any real use to. So those are some of the things that I'm concerned with.
That's the purpose of this meeting, is to really kind of workshop the ideas and, you know, come to some type of consensus of things that the city wants to see in the document and our documents going forward.
Yeah, because I, I did notice the, the pie chart kind of decreased the parks and recreation as, as, as we grow. And I thought that was a, a big concern. How are we implementing that into different communities?
And I think that, as Michelle had mentioned, the ten acres per person is an industry standard that the recreation director had suggested.
But why did the pie chart show less?
I don't know.
If you look at it, I did. I noticed it on the recreation.
But I mean, this is, you know, if you want more, that's something you can suggest. I mean, we can go back and take a look at that. That's, like I said, it's the whole idea of the, the meeting is to have the, it's a workshop to gain ideas and input going forward.
Okay, I did address the stormwater retention. The Kelly Park interchange, that was a concern for me because it seems like with all the annexations, they're kind of annexing up by the north by Kelly Park.
Right.
And we really don't have all that connectivity. The roads aren't really sus, not sustainable, but they're not built for walkability yet. I mean, you, you go up and down Plymouth-Sorento and Appy Lane and, and all that, you don't really see that, that connectivity for walkability. So that's a concern. The other thing is, and that really concerns the community development department is when we put out notices for developments, for new developments that are occurring. One of the things that, you know, I'm kind of receiving some concern is that we only go three hundred feet in my, in my.
We're going into land development code country now.
Oh, okay, see?
So land development.
So how do I, see, this is why I said, this is so, so how do I address those issues?
Comp plan is a future policy, looking into the future.
Right.
Twenty-something years in the future as to how you want to see the city grow. What do we want to be when we grow up? That's basically what it is. As far as public notification, that's in Article Two of the land development code.
Okay.
Three hundred feet, pretty much everywhere I've ever been, three hundred feet. And I've worked at jurisdictions in Lake. I was planning director in Lake County. I was, I was working in Seminole County and the city of Winter Springs. I've worked at a city in Lake County, City of Taveres. This is my first job out of college, twenty-one years ago. I've worked in Orange County. Three hundred feet is usually the same.
I was in Orange County and planning a zoning. It's, it's about five.
I didn't work for Orange County. I worked for the city of Oakley. So cities are a little bit different, yes.
All right. So that's, that's an LDC matter. So, okay, so that's something I can address. But, you know, I, I, I did express some of the concerns and it had to do with open space. And certainly making sure that when we have these new developments, because I'm, I'm all for developers coming in and, and building and creating communities. But I want our communities to have the, to, to give some of the lux, the luxuries, I don't even call them luxuries, but necessities in the community, walkability, connectivity, close to retail stores, that they connect with each community also, that they're not so isolated. So those are some of the things that I'm, I'm concerned with. I haven't been able to go through this whole document. So you, you did present a timeline, if I can just, if you can share that timeline with me.
Why don't we go, let's, let's come back to that. Let's, why don't we move down?
I know, but I just want to make sure that, that Bobby understands because she, you did present the timeline. So all I just ask is if, that you can send that timeline to us so that I can continue looking at this.
This, Commissioner, this is the timeline. There's no set dates yet. So what we have is a draft document.
Okay.
We're workshopping it, kind of gathering ideas and input. Once we gather everything and we feel it's ready to go forward to public hearings, we'll go to the planning commission, which is the doubles as what's called the local planning agency. That's enshrined in state law. So they would make a recommendation to adopt the rewrite of the comprehensive plan. And then it would be forwarded to the city council. The city council would then, as Michelle was saying, transmit it, either vote to transmit or vote not to transmit the comp plan rewrite. There's things, if it wasn't deemed to be appropriate, we'd go back and fix it and go back to another transmittal hearing. Once deemed appropriate to move forward, it would be transmitted to the state Florida Department of Commerce. They have thirty days to review. Then it comes back. They would typically, if there's things that they don't see that are compliant with the law, they would let us know. We'd have to address that. Then we come back for what's called an adoption hearing. These are all public meetings. And then the adoption hearing would basically, just like we did with the transportation element, we had an adoption hearing for that. We then sent that back to the state to get their input afterwards. After they have, I believe it's another thirty days, then there's a thirty-one day appeal period afterwards. So anybody can appeal based on anything they see that's not relevant to Florida statute in relation to comprehensive planning. So we don't have a set date yet as to when we're coming forward.
Just one more question. When will the public be able to come and have a comment?
This is a public meeting right here? This is a public, this is a public hearing.
This is sad. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Had, had a couple of questions. And, and as throughout the document, it mentioned you're trying to build developments where there's less transportation with vehicles and more walking and cycling. So are we building bike paths along the roadways in order to accommodate this? Is this going to be required by the developers, like the instance on Rock Springs Road? But I know up till you get to, I believe, is Poncan, there's a bike path. But after that, there isn't. So the bikes, the cyclists are actually riding in the road. And so that can be a safety hazard. So in this comp plan, are we, we talking about cycling? But is that something we're planning on having developers do when new roads are built that there's a cycling path?
I'm going to let Bobby take this. But again, you have your, your policies in the comp plan. And then transportation mobility element should certainly address this as well as the land development code.
Yes. So Commissioner, in response to your question, some cyclists, some cyclists, they like to ride on the road. And I think the state law says that they have to actually ride on the road as they are a vehicle. However, we do require some of the developments that come forward to do trails, such as in the KPI area. We've required everybody that's come in to set aside a development, a portion of development for twelve feet of a multi-use path going as a trail system to hold linkages in the area. As far as requiring trails, comp plan is a policy document. That would be more of a land development code thing that as far as during sidewalk, you would have to do a trail instead. So it'd be like a twelve-foot wide multipurpose path. So that would be more land development code country we'd be getting into with your question.
Well, I, I guess my question is, I understand the trail, but on, on the actual roadway, if they're traveling, is there going to be a designated bike lane?
So I think the concept you're referring to is complete streets. There are some stuff in there in relation to complete streets, specifically up in the KPI area. We do require that. And that's actually in the form-based code, complete streets concept. And I think the transportation mobility element, which was recently adopted, does refer to complete streets concepts as well. So a complete street is basically where you have cars sharing a roadway with a bicyclist, sharing roadway with a pedestrian, and everybody feels comfortable on that roadway. So you're afraid that, you know, you're not afraid that somebody's going to hit you with a car while you're on that complete street. So I believe that's the concept you're referring to.
Yes. All right. And then the other one, I noticed in policy one point fourteen point sixteen, it says that the community development director should have the authority to approve unless not uses that are not listed in the Kelly Park interchange. So does that mean that that would not come back before city council?
That's the way I interpret that policy. If that's a policy you don't feel comfortable with as a planning commission and a city council, you can strike that.
I, I think there needs to be looked at.
And my suggestion would be to take that out. I think that that really, if a, if a use is a permitted use, it needs to be permitted use. If it's not a permitted use, it's not, somebody can come forward and ask to amend the code and make that a permitted use. So we could definitely take one fourteen, which one did you say?
Uh, one fourteen point sixteen.
Sixteen, okay. And I think that's a carryover from the existing comp plan. I'd have to go back and double check, but.
All right. And then, you know, affordable housing. I saw that mentioned throughout the document. And speaking to developers, they're saying it's going to be another thirty years before we actually have what's called affordable housing. So what is our actual plan to, to accomplish this affordable housing that's addressed in this plan?
Do you take that one?
That's a.
Bobby's taking the easy ones. He's going to stick with the tough ones.
That's a tough question.
Yeah.
We can kind of tag team this one if you want.
Yeah, cost burden is a huge issue throughout Florida. I mean, you've seen the cost of affording a house continues to rise. So I don't know, I've, I've seen areas with huge cost burden, especially for renters.
Yeah. It's, and to kind of dovetail on what Michelle was saying, some of our apartment complexes that have been built, we've done, gone out and done some of the field inspections. And we talked to the site superintendents out there and they said that the rent for a three-bedroom was twenty-four hundred dollars a month. You have to put a first and last in a deposit. So it's not affordable. And I've read statistics say in order to qualify to buy a home in Florida, you have to earn a six-figure salary. And that's just not the reality for most people. I, I, I don't have to answer that question, kind of going back to live local, which was adopted by the state. It basically deems affordable housing as a hundred and twenty percent area median income, which is market rate pretty much. So that's, that's a tough question. I don't know. And maybe Tara, if you have any.
Well, she was just showing me, like one of, I didn't work on the housing element, but a big thing that comes up is like missing middle housing and different types of housing options between your hundreds of units apartment complex and your single-family residential. The, the concept of aging in place. A, a young, young person moves in, maybe they want to start a family. They want something larger. Somebody who's, who's an empty nester, retiring, might want something smaller. Like what kind of options do you have? And one of these policies is create strategies and policies as needed to retain naturally occurring affordable housing and housing types that are typically not developed by the marketplace, such as accessory dwelling units and missing middle housing. Missing middle could be a duplex, a triplex, townhouse, cottage homes seem to be kind of popular in another community. We did, we did a bit of showing images and image preferences for these things. And it's amazing how many people like the missing middle options, which is between two and maybe ten units. So again, that would be something you could either strengthen or strategize with for the future.
Yeah. And I had heard a, a report one time, I guess the city of Minneapolis kind of did away with zoning districts and would allow like a mix of single-family next door to townhomes, next door to apartments to help with an affordability issue as well. I mean, that would be more than the land development code, but you would have to do like, almost like a mixed-use, future land use to allow that type of stuff. Like our mixed-use downtown would be ideal for something like that.
And so, so this comp plan would address that issue?
I can't say for sure that it would. I mean, affordability, housing rates and mortgages and rents are set by the market. But if you, if you get into setting rents and stuff, you're kind of getting into a planned economy, which isn't a market-based economy.
I think what he's just saying is how do we, how do we make, give folks more options that?
Well, I, I, I saw also it, it mentioned that, you know, cities could also have surplus land that could be used to assist in affordable housing as well. And, and so I, I know that is one of the major issues that we have currently and it's something that definitely needs to be addressed. And so I just want to make sure that in some form or fashion that in this comp plan that we're able to do that.
Yeah. And Ms. Sanchez has pointed out in housing element, policy one point one six, I'll read the policy, to assess and identify city properties that are ideal for higher residential densities and mixed-use development in order to develop an inventory of publicly owned lands that would be ideal for affordable housing. With surplus land in inventory, implement best practices in managing surplus lands, such as ensuring long-term affordability of new affordable units and establishing effective criteria for the receipt of land. So that might kind of address some of what you're speaking of.
And also policy one point two-one also talks about affordability, thirteen hundred, one thousand three hundred seventy, affordable housing minutes. It says something about an easy layoff. So I guess it is something in there.
Yeah.
All right. So, so something that as council, we need to pay attention to.
Right. Absolutely.
All right. That's all I have.
Mr. Nesta? Mrs. Morrison, I appreciate you taking the time to present this. I know it's, it's, it's a lot and I just want to thank you for your time here. Are you able to convey the presentation that you had to, to all of us? The, the PowerPoint and all that, are you able to provide that?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Yeah. You can just send that out just so we have copies of that. You know, there, there's discussions and a lot of municipalities are doing this right now is, is more torrent. And some of that came up at last city council meeting. And I don't know if this is, should we build something into this in some capacity that has like a zoning in place? Or, excuse me, zoning in progress or moratorium aspect to it? Or is that more, is that not appropriate for, for this?
Moratoriums are tricky business. They have to be a really good reason, a certain amount of time, and you're open for all sorts of lawsuits.
That, that, that's absolutely true. Sorry to interrupt you there. There.
Is your mic on?
Sorry.
Should be.
Yeah.
Should be.
Closer to it, closer to it, please.
Sorry about that. I have one of these tile locators and it starts beeping. Um, can you hear me okay now? Sure, uh just as uh was just described, moratoriums are are tricky business. Uh, they have to be for a very uh, they have to be for a short duration or as long as they need to be, usually uh within the six-month to one-year range at most. Um, and uh very narrowly tailored to achieve a very specific goal for a very good reason. Uh, so they're not something that needs to be called out directly in a comprehensive plan. They're more a creature of statute and uh, you know, enabled uh, don't, they need to be part of a development code either. Uh, but it's something that a city does have an option to do. I won't say necessarily as a last resort, but it is a um uh certainly when there's a significant problem to address, it is a tool to use. Uh, sometimes they're referenced in comprehensive plans, but they don't require authorization or policies to implement them, if that answers your question.
Understood, thank you. Yeah, and I I think it may be advantageous to have some type of to- policy built in that just says once we start hitting certain metrics that it may be time to review or look at or progress to conversations of slowing down or moratorium-style um conversations. So just something to think about, I I think it'd be worthwhile to do, just especially with where we're at right now to make sure we're not in the same position ten, twenty, thirty years from now. Um, let me see what else I got here. Do we, do we have anything, uh or do you have anything already compiled that shows or that is easily accessible that is what we're, our current future land, our future, our comp plan versus what is proposed, like kinda the changes per policy, like in the the housing element? Here's what was, here's what we're proposing. Do we have a document that kinda?
We have um tracking spreadsheets where each policy is reviewed and and the changes that it underwent in order to get to where it is.
Is that something you'd be willing to share or can you craft that into something that's shareable? Cause I think that'd be advantageous to kinda see where we were, maybe a thought process as to why this is now suggested. Or would you prefer that's not?
No, it's, I mean, the, yeah, the city has, I I can resend them. Um, it's volumes because you, there might be.
Yeah, and again, I think it's, cause I think we all have something maybe that we have a deep dive or uh uh an interesting, whether it's housing um parks and right, whatever it may be, I think we can kinda take a deeper dive in each of our own specific focuses there that makes sense and that we feel that would be valuable. So yeah, if we can get that, I think that would be great.
Fabulous.
I think that's it. Thank you so much again.
And I do have have one other and and I just noticed, and and it was a reference to small businesses. Uh, small businesses are leaving Apopka because because of the rent, actually. And and so I don't know if there's some thing that we can craft where we can be of a greater assistance to our small businesses in order to retain them uh in in our city as well.
So I'm thinking that that might go in the resilience um element, resilience and su- sustainability element. There is, there are some things in there and um we can also look, see if there was anything in the economic element that could be brought over.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you would do that.
We've looked at a possible economic element, but then opted not, but anything that was done for that element could be brought into any of the other elements where it where it fits. So that that kinda falls under resilience, I think, you know, trying to maintain these local small businesses.
Alright.
Mr. Ward, no, nothing? William Duster, nothing? Alright, I've I've got a couple of things. Um, one is like, well, for our IT staff, we'll make sure everything is, will be up on on the website and and then if we can probably make sure that there's a place for our um constituents to weigh in on on those, whatever we put up there, you know, comments as to things that they'd like to see changed or improved or enhanced, whatever. I think that would be a um uh would be good for us. Um, yeah, go back to, I think, maybe it was Commissioner Smith talking about ADU units and um I know, gosh, this has been hmm, a long time ago. I was, one of my first, I cut my teeth here at the city. I was a uh a zoning board variance member and we we had ADUs and it was only for family members and it what we back, had back in the in the day was it was a, I'll never forget, it was a a pretty good friend that their, they were, their um mother and father, or may- maybe it's just a mother um couldn't live on her own, but didn't wanna go to a nursing home, so they put a uh a mobile home in the back of the of the of their lot with the the stipulation that it had to be when when they passed away or moved on to a, you know, skilled nursing or nursing home. They had to take it back off the property. So I don't know if that's something, I know that was probably not here, that would be more in the land development code, but see, I have a, on one hand, I think it it's, there's an advantage, my mother's ninety-five, she probably hate for me to say this, but you know, there might there might be a day when she would, you know, would like to be close but not in a nursing home, and so it might be something we'd look at. But we don't have that in our policy, but on the, on the other hand, I, what I don't want is um rental houses that you throw an ADU on the back just to make it more income. It's, you know, I think for family members or or, you know, I, even even if it's your and your son who just got out of, you know, son or daughter just got out of college and just needs wants to kinda be on their own, but not really, but so I, I don't know how we, we, I know, obviously it goes back to land development code, but how do we look at that in a in a way that we're not making, you know, just making rental income and 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 yet there there's definitely a need for family members that we could help. I just don't know how we we craft that and at what level.
Well, I I think Orange County or the city of Orlando, they've come up with some code where they're allowing, I guess they call it Mother Mark Waters or something in the backdoor where the land is available to do that.
Yeah.
Uh, not necessarily a mobile home.
Yeah, yeah. So that's the one thing. The the other is on the, I, I guess one of your first slides is talking about the population growth. I know one of the things that, you know, right now we're, you know, kinda facing is the immigration um versus migration and and it's seems to be, you know, right now we've got a lot of immigration and 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 a lot of migration, but you know, what happens in five years or, you know, is is will the migration slow down? Will the immigration slow down? I mean, because right now our our birth rate is below sustainability. If it weren't for for Florida, and I mean, the country as a whole, if it weren't for immigration, we would be losing population. And if it weren't for, you know, migration, Florida wouldn't be growing at at the rate it's growing, so I I, you know, I know that's, it's above your pay grade, but it's, but it's something I think we need to think about is you know, immigration and migration are the two reasons why we're growing. We're not growing internally.
Yeah, death, I think death rate exceeds birth rate uh from our our talk with the um Bieber and Schimberg, those are the UF population gurus. Um, so yeah, it's it's due to migration.
So, yeah, anyways, I just, I just, it's just interesting, but anyway. Yeah, and and I guess, you know, I have no other questions. Um, anybody else have any last questions for for staff if?
I just wanna make sure that i- if we are gonna do comments and stuff on 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 our webpage and all that, that we all get kinda the comments, what, the copies of the comments that residents are stating, just so we can be on the same page there and and reach out as needed and and either direct them to that, hey, this is already implemented or absolutely we're looking into it. Thank you.
Alright, with that, we'd like to thank uh Michelle and her team at East Central Florida Regional Planning Council for all your hard work in getting this to this point. We uh, we appreciate, I know, a lot of hours by your staff and our staff uh to get to this point and um we look for, you know, look forward to a, you know, a a really well-done um a plan that that uh couldn't have, definitely couldn't have done it without y'all, so with that, we'll uh close this public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.